Before we begin, I just want to introduce the members of the Ways and Means Committee. Starting from my far left, we have the floor leader, Rep Ralph Umu. To his right is Representative Selena Babauta, the chairwoman of Judiciary and Governmental Operations. Next to her, we have Representative Patrick Sunicolas, representing the island of Tinian. Next to him, we have Representative Edwin Probst, he is the Chair of Gaming. And then we have Representative Christina Sablan, the Chairwoman of Health and Welfare. I am the Chair for Ways and Means, Donald Menolonia. And then we have the Vice Chair and Minority Leader, Representative Ivan Blanco. To his right, Representative Sheila Babauta, the Chairwoman for Natural Resources. And then sitting in this meeting, we have the Vice Speaker, Representative Blas Alentanata. And then we have Representative Richard Lizama, the Chair for P U T C. Joining us in just a short moment is Representative Denita Yanktemay. She is the Chairwoman for Commerce and Tourism. And absent today, and please mark him as excused, is Representative Vicente Camacho, the Chairman for Federal and Foreign Affairs. So... Oh, my apologies. And to my far right, Representative Leila Staffler, Chairwoman for Education. And then with us today are the L B staff. We have our Frisco Analyst, Dave Demipon, our Legislative Assistant, Ms. Claire Sablan. And then to your right, our Legal Counsel, Joe Tyron, and our Sergeant at Arms, Sergeant Pete Twye and Derahie. All right, good morning, members. With... Ten members present, this constitutes a quorum. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please? Motion has been adopted by Rep Sablan, seconded by Rep Lizama. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries, agenda is hereby adopted. Good morning, members. Good morning, Mayor Efren Ahtalik.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, in the span of two days, we will be conducting a series of budget hearings for all departments and agencies. Today, we are going to tackle the mayor's office, the municipal council, Department of Finance, Department of Commerce, and the Department of Labor. And then tomorrow will be the five-day meeting. With us today, if any of the members or any of the agencies have questions, is Special Assistant for Office and Management and Budget, Ms. Virginia Villagomez. Both come. And so with that, please keep in mind for any of the resident department heads that are currently present today. In assessing the budget, we have the governor's proposal under the general fund. And then we have the governor's proposal of the American Rescue Plan. And then we have the combination of those. Now, while we do not have authority over the American Rescue Plan, we do have a bill that's in the Senate that would require legislative approval. But while that hasn't passed the Senate, we are going to take a look at the American Rescue Plan and provide our recommendation and proposal to the governor on some of these funds and how we feel they should be spent. So if you have any recommendations or anything else to add, please feel free to share that with us, and then we'll certainly include that in the plan. So with that, members, anyone else would like anything to say? All right, if there are none, good morning again, Honorable Mayor Efren Ahtalik. I now open the floor to you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Donald Menolonia, and distinguished and honorable committee members, which is a very important committee, the Ways and Means. As I look at the proposal from the governor's office in our offices and the A R P, we came to the conclusion, just to make it simple, that we all agreed to the submissions of the governor and the A R P. So I'm not sure if there's anything that we or that you people can give us as we ask, or if we should ask. But I'm telling you right now that we, the directors, agree with the submissions from the governor and the A R Ps.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I now open the floor to any of the members, if they would like to ask any questions.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor. My name is Sheila Babauta, Representative from P C four, and also Chairwoman for the Natural Resources Committee. Just for the members' indulgence, many of us, this is our first time conducting a budget hearing on Rota. And so we are very excited to hear from your office, hear about the programs that you have in place, your personnel, challenges, barriers that your office faces, COVID-19 implementation of guidelines, you know, how you have managed to how you have managed to keep your staff on, keep programs going through the pandemic. And also, if you can share how your office has responded to that, this would be a very good time, and that's something I'd like to ask you to do. In addition to your statement of supporting the governor's proposed budget for the office of the mayor of Rota, can you share what the office of the mayor is all about, your priorities for 2022? Since you are here to speak of the 2022 budget, and then if you would like to share any of the impact for your 2021 budget that has currently been impacted, right? We are analyzing the ARPA funds, the American Rescue funding, that will also be available for your 2021 budget. So now would be the opportune time for you to share with us and with the community on activities from the office of the mayor of Rota.
Thank you, Congressman. I believe this is your second time to Rota, right? Thank you, thank you for coming for the second time. So, to the COVID-19 issue, we, as far as I'm concerned, I respectfully, I respect the decisions from the task force. I know that some of the communities here, like, asking me, "When can we open the travel to Guam?" And I responded with the, that I am not a doctor. And I believe politicians have no business telling their constituents, "When can they go to Guam?" Yes, I will leave that up to the doctors' decision. As far as the programs here on Rota, we are working with the governor's office through the budgets. I know the budgets are really low now, but we are having a multitasking. We perform that so that we can complete or accomplish the stated goals that we have, and that's to serve our community as best as we can. So I thank the governor's office for their help and also to the legislatures like you guys. So, in addition to that, we have programs for the youth to make them active. Because as we lock down our communities here, we, I noticed there's a level of stress. And the activities that we have will minimize those stress for our young folks here on the island. So that's the programs that we have. As far as tourists is concerned, again, we work with the governor's office. Although the budget level is low, but we're doing our best to clean up, renovate, and build a new tourist attraction for our tourists here on the island.
Thank you, thank you for sharing that, Mr. Mayor. I think it's very important that you, as mayor of Rota, share what your priorities are and what they have been. Because your office, according to our budget, does represent the most employed on the island of Rota, right? So right now, the number of positions is almost double that of any other agency, including the police, D F M's, agriculture, finance. The office of the mayor has almost doubled the number of employees. So, you know, with that kind of budget, with that kind of responsibility that you are taking a hold of for the island of Rota, I think it's just important that we understand what programs and what priorities your office has. So thank you for sharing your priorities for the youth and, you know, tourist attractions. But since you do employ the most number of people on the island of Rota, what are some of the challenges that you have faced in the past year? And how are you looking to, you know, fund them or address that with this upcoming budget? Since the upcoming budget, you are looking at receiving more than what you have requested. And that is, you know, largely a part to the ARPA funding. You are looking to receive more than what you submitted. So how will you use that funding now that you have more?
Well, thank you for that question. As you know, we are in a COVID-19 situation. And my idea is to hire as much people as we can. Because of the unemployment here, it has increased. And therefore, I'd like to use that funds for our people here to work. And having these people, I would MOU them to the departments that needed them. So I'm all for employment here on the island of Rota.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that we're all for employment in the entire scene of mine. What we are trying to at least, you know, ensure is that when we do have positions open and available, that the productivity level does increase, you know, that the priorities are being carried out. And so thank you for sharing that. Mr. Chairman, thank you for making time. I yield at this moment to have the floor open to other members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chairman. Honorable Mayor, while the governor gave you more than what your municipality had requested, there are several items that were underfunded. And significant of those are the Revenue and Tax Office and the Rota Police. And I understand that the bulk of it is in their personnel. How are we to address these two areas?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Well, let's take the police. When we analyzed that yesterday and this morning, we found out that there are errors in that inputting on their personnel. And so we have corrected that, and we will submit that correction to the governor and, of course, to you guys. As far as I'm concerned, if you look at the analysis, I don't know if you guys have a copy of the analysis. It says here that the municipality of Rota would have a 1.3 million... 1.3 million or over. So, the all the negative, the red ink that you see on your list, if you total that up, we are looking at 606,000. So we're gonna minus that from the 1.3,000, and we'll have 743,000. So I'm saying that we will operate on a balanced budget based on this analysis.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. I look forward to that revision to be resubmitted. My final question has to do with the road. When you're coming from the airport, I'm starting to see cracks on your beautiful, beautiful road. And if that address, give it a few more months, there will be potholes. And I wanted to bring that up because I understand some of the ARPA funds will be given to the municipalities. Will you be using some of the funds for maybe resurfacing?
Yes, of course. At this moment, we're gathering data as to what we need here on the island and forward it to the governor to include on his expenditure plan. But yes, we, as a matter of fact, last week, we have forwarded the, or rather, I signed the contract for the resurfacing of these main roads. So I'm hoping that maybe in a couple of weeks, we can see movement on the repair of these roads. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. That's good news for us to know, as well as the people of Rota. Mr. Chairman, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, guys, share. The floor is now open. I recognize Rep Selena Babauta.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Honorable Mayor. I'm curious, how many employees of the municipal, municipality of Rota were furloughed since March of 2020? Have they all been recalled? Is the municipality back on 80 hours as the governor's directive was issued? Can we start with how many employees were furloughed?
About 22. And yes, they were, they are all recalled and all back on 80 hours.
Okay, thank you. During the start of the pandemic, when you had to furlough 20 people, how was the municipality able to carry out their constitutionally mandated duties? How did it affect the municipality of Rota as a whole?
Well, you know, of course, they're all being affected negatively. And again, I instituted, I have asked the employees to allow the multitasking because we are now at a reduced manpower. So fortunately, they did that. And fortunately, the governor put in place the recall and the 80 hours.
Thank you. With respect to the departments during the furlough period, were they still able to carry out their duties, like you said, because of multitasking? And how well did any function of any department, you know, shut down as a result of these furlough of the 20 employees? Or did the municipality still was able to carry out all of their duties? Were there any departments that were, or divisions that were shut down as a result?
No, there's no, none, none had shut down. However, it impacted negatively on services. It slowed down. No, but yes, it impacted, but none of them or none of the departments shut down.
And last question, Mr. Chairman, if I may. How much of the CARES Act funds was reprogrammed to the municipality since March of 2020? How much of federal funds that have come in as a result of the pandemic benefits? How much was the municipality of Rota able to realize from that?
About 700,000.
Thank you, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Rep Babauta. I now pass the mic to Rep Lizama.
Thank you, Chairman. And thank you, Mayor. Good morning and welcome to Rota. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
You have a significant increase of personnel, 29%. And you also have operation of 62% increase. Do you include the safety or hazardous pay? For some example, the fire department, the fleet? One time, they were complaining they're not getting their hazardous pay. Is it included, or can we...
No, no, they're not included. I believe the administration covers for that.
And of course, you can use the American Rescue Plan to cover what was not paid to the pad. Is that possible?
Sure, sure.
Okay, good. And I'd like to have these people know that you are gonna pay them.
Yes.
Thank you. And as far as the travel that you just mentioned, and maybe perhaps you tell your people that, hey, you have to travel to Saipan, and that's where you take a flight to. And of course, when you return back, you have to have four days, five days of, what do you call it? Quarantine. We don't tell them that they can't travel. We have availability, but they just have to go to a different route. Isn't that...
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I yield back. Thank you. You answered my question.
Thank you, Rep Lizama. The floor is now open for any other member.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, everyone in attendance. Thank you so much for inviting us to your beautiful, incredible island here. So happy to be here. I continue to be in awe of how clean and beautiful the island of Rota is. It is just breathtaking.
That's the work of all of these people that are hired.
They are all doing incredible work. I just want to say that, and they all should be commended. It's been, it's reminiscent of Saipan back in the 70s. Yes, I am that old. But, you know, it's just very clean and pristine. And I just want to give you kudos for all of that. I did want to ask, with regard to the, I looked at the personnel, and I noticed that Parks and Recreation only has four employees. So obviously, the Parks and Rec, they are able to function with only four employees? Or do they work alongside with the mayor, with your office?
Yes, that's exactly what's happening. And as a matter of fact, we submitted a personal action to add one more staff.
For Parks and Rec?
For Parks and Rec, yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering, because with the name Parks and Rec, you would think that, you know, that's the responsibility, Parks and Rec. But I guess the mayor's office is the backbone, really, of keeping the island the way it looks and its cleanliness. Okay, I just wanted that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you. I yield, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman Probst. I just have a few questions. So last legislature, we had a joint session here in Rota to approve the extension of the Mobile Police Agreement. Has any of the... Have they lived up to their agreement in terms of what they're going to provide the municipality? Or if not, are there, what's going on with that process?
They're in the process, yes, they are in the process at this point to give us the benefits of that extension.
So that hasn't been finalized?
It hasn't been finalized, no.
Have you already started working with N V A, knowing that they'll be receiving a bulk of the ARPA funds to boost tourism? Have you been working with N V A? And if so...
Yes, my office has been working with the N V A here. As you know, we all know that I hired some people. So I gave them some people to execute the plans that we together pondered for the tourism industry. Yes.
And while we're at the subject of N V A, with them getting some of their funds returned back by Department of Finance, how much in auto occupancy tax is owed to the municipality?
At this point, there's like over 300,000.
Have you follow-up with that, 300,000?
Yes, I have asked them not to forget about that.
But any word as to when you might be expecting some of those funds?
No, I have not done any date, but I was assured that the payment will be made.
Thank you. The next question I have is actually for Ms. Villagomez from O M B. Do we have a figure for the municipality, how much of W G I will be applied?
I worked on the calculation this week, but I did not, I did not sort it out by municipality. So if you can just give me a few minutes to just break it up and provide that.
Sure, sure. A few minutes, so we will provide it today. For now, members, does anyone have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning once again, Mr. Mayor, and Ms. Villagomez, and members of the public court here. I was wondering, Mr. Mayor, if you could explain in more detail the priorities that you submitted to the administration for the use of the American Rescue Plan Act monies? So as you know, these funds can be used, at least one part of the money, the half a billion dollars or so coming to the Commonwealth, can be used for mitigating economic impacts. It can be used for premium pay for essential workers, for critical infrastructure, and also for government services that have been impacted by COVID-19. And of the half a billion dollars, approximately half of that, which would be spent in this coming year, the governor is proposing 3.89 million for Rota. And I know you said that is sufficient. Is that what you've submitted in your requests for these funds? Or, you know, could you just explain to us in more detail what you requested and what those funds were requested for?
Thank you. Like I said earlier, we are still in the process of collecting all the list of needed, what's needed here. But I can tell you that that's not enough. For one thing, I'm in the process of talking to my staffs here. And of course, I will be discussing with delegation that I plan to bring our people back home through the dialysis. So that's one of the top priority that I have, is to bring the people home. You know, fix up the dialysis center here and bring these people home. And the other thing is that each department here will have a vehicle. And I can tell you right now that these departments are driving 20-year-old cars. And as you all know, most of you here are new, that last year and two years ago, we have submitted a request for vehicle, but it fell in death years. So now, these are A R P funds we are targeting, we're focusing purchases of those vehicles, which is very much needed here in the island of Rota.
Thank you, that's helpful. So as far as we can tell then, this 3.89 million that the governor is proposing in addition, that would come from the ARPA monies, you're saying that that's really just for personnel and to fill in the shortfalls from your personnel and your operations? But you will be submitting a request for more. So this is not, this is not all of what Rota will be getting, or all of what Rota needs?
No, no, this is just the budget issue, or we're talking about budget here, right?
Right. Right.
So our plan is to gather all this information, all what we need, and give it to the governor to hopefully include it in this expenditure plan.
And do you have a timeline for that?
I'm sorry?
Sorry, do you have a timeline for completing your collection of data and submitting?
Next week.
Next week?
Yeah.
Would you be able to provide this committee with that as well? With your request?
Well, would you request the governor? I guess I can give it to you, but, you know, we go change of plan.
Sure, it would be helpful though, as we are deliberating on the budget. And as you know, we also would like to supplement our request for the use of these funds. So it would be helpful.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you Chairman Sablon. One last question while we wait for Ms. Villa Gomez is, we'll be finding out more this afternoon, but there's a discussion going on to transition the inter-island medical refer over to CHCC. Do you have a figure as to how much each year you are subsidizing the Rota liaison on Saipan?
No, I'm sorry, at this point, no, I don't have. But I can get that information to you. But I can tell you that the government is costing a lot of money for these medical firms. And let me tell you that, you know, there's no place like home. Especially when you're sick. I like to bring them home. And this is perhaps the funds that can give us that. So that's a target that I'm looking at.
Okay, members, anyone else? I'd like to ask the mayor any questions before we go to recess? Okay, at this time, we'll go into a short recess while we wait for Ms. Villa Gomez to provide us these amount. Thank you.
Thank you.
As the special assistant calculations for the within grade increase, I will share that with the members. But Ms. Villa Gomez, do you have anything you want to add? Okay, I'll share that with the members. And then the next time, we do have our budget hearing where Ms. Villa Gomez will be available, please share your questions then. In the meantime, Rep Sheila, did you want to add any last minute? Do you have any questions you want to?
Thank you Mr. Chairman. Before we move into discussing the within grade increases, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to ask you a question, or a series of questions, to better understand the structure of questioning for today. And so, can you explain the relationship that you have with the resident directors on Rota? Given the fact that, you know, the analysis that we have here does list a number of departments that are underfunded and a number of positions that have been reduced in certain departments, are those questions that we should save for the resident directors to answer? Or are those questions that we should direct to you?
Thank you for the question. Your question about relationship, we do have great relationship. And I've always tell them that my office is always open to help them, whether it's financially or anything other than financial. But you're talking about the deficits, right? And the number of positions reduced. I am here, I always tell them, I'm here to help them with their finance, financial, and of course, fee and number of personnel. But yes, I will definitely help them.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. So in regards to, you know, let's say the police department being underfunded, over five hundred thousand, procurement and supply, customs, personnel for fish and wildlife, we should go ahead and wait for the resident directors? Just to, my questions really will, my questions want to address what the departments will do, how they will respond to the decrease in funding, and where their priorities will shift, you know?
Well, you can ask them that to get, I guess, the right answer. Just telling you now that whatever issue that they have with the finances, my office is ready to cover for those deficits. And back to the Department of Safety. Like I said on the outset, that we need to correct those figures because we found out that that's not correct. I believe there's like a hundred and sixty-something, not five hundred sixteen. So in the Department of Finance, we realize as well that the defined benefit has been carried on by the former director's salary. And so that's not really in there. It was just typo.
So clarified, thank you Mr. Mayor.
So again, you can go ahead and ask each individual director if you will, but I'm just here to answer your general question.
Okay, thank you for that. I will save my questions for when we meet with the resident directors. And lastly, the responsibilities and duties of a mayor, the mayor of Tinian Rota, Ana Gigan, Saipan and the Northern Islands, includes, includes a quarterly report being submitted to the governor relating to programs and services carried out by the mayor's office. Is that something that you complete on a quarterly basis?
I'm sorry to tell you that, not exactly, not every quarter, but yes, I have.
Okay. I'm also reading from our CMI Constitution.
Yes.
Section three, under responsibilities and duties of the mayor. So when was the last time your quarterly report was submitted to the governor?
Last year, last autumn?
Okay. And so, okay, and so that is something that will be available through the mayor's office? Through request from the mayor's office?
Yes, over the governor's office.
Over the governor's office? Okay, great. Thank you. And part of your duty as a mayor is to investigate complaints and conduct public hearings in regards to government operations, local matters, hearing from your residents, you know, your employees, staff, on some issues and concerns regarding the Rota island and community. Have you held any public hearings recently?
Yes, I have.
And what were the topics discussed?
It's about labor and the CW, you know, it's that issue.
Okay, so lack of labor for construction purposes?
Yes.
Okay. And have you received any complaints to the office of the mayor?
No, I have not.
Okay. Thank you. That is all the questions I have at this moment. Mr. Chairman, thank you so much, I yield.
Thank you Rep Abalta. If there are no other questions, at this time, I would like to thank you, Honorable Mayor Athalik, and your office for being here today and presenting to the members of the committee your priorities. Yeah, one thing that, just to recap, so the committee will be expecting two reports. One is the year-proposed request for the spending plan for the American Rescue Plan.
Correct.
And as well as the cost breakdown for the Rota liaison on Saipan. How much it costs to run that program on Saipan?
Correct. That will be provided to you.
Okay. And so with that, Mayor, we are approaching, or it's already eleven oh two. Are there any last remarks that you would like to give to members?
Just to thank you guys for coming to Rota and hearing our, you know, concerns and course deposits. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, with that, we will now be moving on to the municipal council. And so, we will give them a few minutes to make their way inside. And so, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do see the chairman coming up, so give them time to set up. Short recess. Next, we have the Rota Municipal Council. And I'll leave that to the chairman to introduce himself as well as provide any opening remarks.
Okay, for the record, my name is Jim Michael Athalik. I'm the chairman for the AITN RMC. And I would like to welcome everyone, Chairman Donald, and the rest of the members. Thank you. Welcome to Rota.
Thank you Chairman Jim Athalik. So we just received a copy of your request. Members, I have with me a copy of the council's request. And maybe Chairman Athalik, if you can just quickly go through your request, maybe identify, or justify your request if it is not included in the proposed budget? Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I have the personnel for the Rota AITN RMC. We're operating with projects and public services that requires total of thirteen foot-time employees, FTEs. Presently, we have only three FTEs under the 1066O, and 1066P, and 1066Q. There's a total of ten positions that were not funded. Our current budget for the personnel currently is a hundred eighty thousand, two hundred ninety-eight. Personally, I have a total of nine AMU from the mayor's office under the CARES Act. So I'm asking if there's any way that, you know, get additional two hundred thousand to have these nine employees under the municipal council?
Okay, so just to be clear, you currently have three staff under RMC. You have nine staff that are being funded under the CARES Act through the mayor's office that was assigned to the RMC. And you are asking to transition them?
Correct, correct, Mr. Chairman.
When does the CARES Act for these nine FTEs expire?
I believe September.
Okay, and the rest of your list aren't highlighted? I'm assuming, and looking at the numbers, they are what the council had requested and was awarded by the governor's proposal? Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and please explain, you have another section that was highlighted?
That's the personnel of six, four, five, eight, zero. I'm requesting additional sixty thousand to purchase two vehicles for the AITN RMC. The daily operations. Currently, my staff right now, they're just using their own personal vehicles to provide service to our community. And as far as safety issues, we have to have all vehicles to provide service to our community.
Do you know when's the last time the council had received any such vehicle?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not too sure, but maybe five or six administrations passed and the RMC do not have any vehicle to provide service.
Okay, and please explain to the members, what are some of the projects and activities that the council is working on that would require the vehicle?
Right now, we're working closely with the mayor and other departments. MVA, MVA's know that they're understaffed. PSS in Rota has only one maintenance, so we're helping them, you know, with their grounds. Manamco Center, we're helping them too. And DPW, because some of our roads here, you know, the vegetation will go down, so we're going out there and assisting them same time. And MB on both sides, Chairman?
Chairman Jim, how much right now does the council have currently to run its operations this fiscal year? Is that something that you have?
I believe you have that a three hundred and thirty-six, right? Sixty-five thousand.
Sixty-five for the entire fiscal year?
Yes, yes, it's correct.
Are you being subsidized through other funding? You don't have, do you have any CARES Act for operations?
No.
Thank you Chairman, for now, members, do you have any questions? I recognize Vice Chair.
Thank you Chairman. Chairman Athalik, good morning.
Good morning, Vice Chair.
So for your vehicle, you're proposing the sixty thousand dollar. For how many vehicles?
Two vehicles, Mr. Chair.
And in the governor's proposal, it's showing zero. But under the American Rescue Plan, there's about five thousand dollars allocated for vehicle. Are there other vehicles that cost five thousand dollars?
That five thousand, I believe that's for the, for the looping app?
Okay, just for the, but do you have any vehicles right now?
No. Personal vehicles right now, and it's not safe for our staff.
Okay, just a general question. So your proposal is four hundred and seventy thousand dollars, but the governor's proposal, general fund and the ARP is at three hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And I'm looking at a hundred and thirty-four thousand difference?
Are you going to make order staff, but putting out each?
So, but there would be a shortfall from the proposal of hundred and thirty-four?
Yes.
Are we able to operate with that much, that significant amount from what you proposed? Will you be able to function?
No.
Okay. Thank you, just wanted to verify. Chairman, I yield.
Thank you Vice Chair. The floor is now open. Members, if there are none? Okay, so just to recap, oh, sorry, I recognize Rep Abalta.
Thank you Mr. Chairman, Chairman Athalik. Thank you for being here with us today. We are very happy to hear, you know, some of the projects that the Rota Municipal Council is conducting. And I'm glad my colleagues here have brought up concerns about, you know, your vehicles. And I'm glad my colleagues here have brought up concerns about, you know, your vehicles and then your staff input wage increases, right? Those are some of the priorities that you've mentioned. So according to the budget analysis here, can you talk to us about your location? Do you have a physical office location for the Rota Municipal Council?
Yes, right now, we're currently renting old Rota High School at the user.
Do you pay rent on the facility?
No.
Okay, so no rent, there, right now, your budget has listed zero for office space. There's zero for printing and photocopying, there is zero for advertising, zero for cleaning services. And so are these responsibilities, how are they being paid for? If, since you are not paying rent, as you said, cleaning services, photocopying services, just basic functions of an office, how is that being funded?
It's a balance, the mayor.
Okay, and so and so do you submit a request to the mayor's office every month for a budget? Or do you request for reimbursements at the end of the month?
Uh, not that I know right now, but I'll get.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that. I wanted to I wanted to go over some of your just the details of the Rota Municipal Council. So right now, there are how many members on the council?
Three members.
Three members, so all positions are filled?
Yes, all of them are filled right now.
Okay, great, and so what is your, in your opinion, what is the overall like mission of the Rota Municipal Council?
Our mission right now is to water and assist, you know, especially these are tourist sites right now. That are all the grass road, they're taking a road, and as well as assisting the school or Manamko.
Okay, so those are some of the priority programs for the municipal council? Okay. I see. And so right now, so your office department's request was at one hundred and ninety thousand. The governor's proposal, including ARPA funding, will bring it up to over three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, just like was mentioned before. And so with that funding, will you prioritize the increase in salary? Is that?
Yes, yes.
So that's over one hundred and forty thousand dollars for the office to run. Will you be hiring more than thirteen?
No.
Okay, so you'll be keeping it at thirteen?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for being with us today. Your input is greatly appreciated and valuable, so with that, Mr. Chairman, may you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rep. Bauta. Any other members? I recognize Representative Staffler.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman Athlick, for joining us here today and telling us about the plans you have. And I want to thank you for helping the public school system with the yard work. I see you have a lot of fuel budgeted, and so I assume that's for all of the extra yard and MBA support that you guys do?
Yes.
Awesome. I noticed that you have twenty thousand dollars allocated for, or budgeted for machines, tools and equipment. What kind of things are you planning on buying?
Currently, the municipal council, we have only one bush cutter that's working, the rest are, you know, installing service. We couldn't getting bush cutters, chainsaws, riding mowers and other equipment to utilize for operations.
So you guys have one bush cutter?
Only one bush cutter, and our staff, you know, they bring their own bush cutter.
So that was my next question, is your staff are bringing their equipment?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you for all of your commitment and your staff's commitment to beautifying our island. I'm very happy to see that you're going to buy the equipment and that you're also planning to buy the vehicles. So that the wear and tear will be on the municipality, municipality and not the people who are doing the work.
That's correct.
Thank you. Ayu.
Thank you, Rep. Staffler. Any other members? All right, if not, again, just to recap, Chairman Jim, your total request that you submitted today to the committee includes amounts that were already awarded through the governor's proposal. But the additional funds that you are requesting are to transition ten FTEs that are currently being funded under the CARES Act into the Rota Municipal Council. At twenty thousand per employee. And then you are requesting additional sixty thousand for the purchase of two vehicles.
That's correct.
Okay, with that, the committee will take that under advisement. At this time, Chairman Athlick, do you have any closing remarks that you would like to give?
Uh, no, but I would like to thank everybody and welcome again to Rota.
Thank you from the Rota Municipal Council. Just before we recess for lunch, I do want to remind the members that we do have the Special Assistant for OMB here, joining us today. She will not be here tomorrow, so if you have any questions pertaining to any of the departments that will be calling in tomorrow, please reach out to her before she leaves. And so with that, members, thank you again, Chairman Jim, and thank you to the mayor of Rota. We will now recess until one o'clock for the Department of Finance. Under the municipality of Rota, Department of Finance has four divisions. We have procurement, revenue tax, customs and finance and accounting. So take note of that on your analysis. And so with that, I now, I see that the resident director of Department of Finance is here. I use the floor to her opening statement.
Good morning, everyone. If you guys can hear me. Good morning, I'm sorry, good afternoon, everybody. I hope everyone had a good lunch here on the island of Rota. For our visitors, thank you very much for coming to our island. For the honorable chairman, welcome back home. And I hope you guys are able to see what the island of Rota has to offer beyond this public area. My name is Agri Hokup. I am the resident director for the Department of Finance. And as the chairman said, we have four divisions in this department for Rota. And that is the Division of Financial Services, the Division of Procurement Services, the Division of Revenue and Taxation, and the newly formed with the merger, the Division of Quarantined Customs and Quarantine. So you will see that in those folders, we provided you guys a copy of our budget submission. But I am going to have to submit an amended request for the Division of Financial Services to include the amended amount for our request for office rental. There will also be a submission of revision for Division of Customs and Quarantine because we are waiting to see how that merger is going to affect us. I can't give you guys at this moment what the cost of personnel or operations will be. I have to wait for the conversion of OPM as well as the transition team to assist us with that. So I ask for your forgiveness at the moment. And as soon as we get all those things squared up, we will be submitting it to the governor again and as well as this body. The Department of Finance, our goal is to maintain public trust and lead as the model of the governance. With the rules, regulations, policies and responsibilities entrusted to us by the virtue of the Commonwealth Code, one, chapter eleven subsection two, five, five, one. We are committed to serving our community the best we can with the resources, whatever resources. We are afforded every single budget, whether we are underfunded or we are adequately funded. We, we are tasked with collecting, depositing, distributing and maintaining the accounts for the public funds in accordance with CNMI statutes. We enforce the CNMI tax laws, other applicable laws, customs regulations and now to include quarantine regulations. We encourage voluntary compliance as well as outreach education efforts into our taxpayers, into our community and to the business community. And lastly, we want to be fair and consistent in our enforcement. We, I would like to exercise general supervision of my division. We have, we have a model and a theme that I promised our staff. That they would always be included and valued in every single decision that we made. So the budget submission that you have before you was not just created by yourself. It was together with the input of every single staff beyond the supervisory and the management levels. Because these budgets affects them. Our priorities, my priorities for the department of course is to include an increased salary for the personnel. To give those who've never been promoted over five years, some of them much longer, into a position that is livable and respectful of the contribution they give this department. I want, I would like that they would have increased funding for professional development. And that is something that is direly needed for the island of Rota. We will not be able to provide the services that the taxpayers here on Rota really need if we do not have the tools and the resources to do it. We would be doing a great disservice. The department currently has fifteen FTEs. Two of them, which includes myself, is in the administration. Two of the, two people lose personnel for financial services. There is two in the procurement services. Three are locally funded in revenue and tax. Two of them are funded by other accounts. Six are locally funded at custom services. And two are funded out of the custom services in Saikan. And then now we will be acquiring the eight quarantine that will be merged in. We're still waiting to see how that's going to happen. The Rota mayor's office has been charitable enough to give us two level use to balance out when we had our staff furloughed. The administrative specialist was furloughed, so the mayor's office needed someone to assist in that. We also needed assistance in revenue and tax because there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff going on in that department and they are severely understaffed. In the budget, you will see for them that I asked for promotions as well as new FTEs. And the reason for that is not just because I wanted to hand out promotions. You will see that that division does not have a division manager for the longest time. For some reason, that revenue generating enforcement division lacks that, and I believe it needs that. I also requested for an enforcement officer, because at the moment, we have just a trainee. And we cannot issue fines and fees with just a trainee position. I need there to be a position that has authority behind it in order for me, in order for the department to collect. So that is one of the things that we had asked for. And also, we really need to, as you see, this is where Department of Finance is. Earlier, we had someone who was a wheelchair taxpayer and it was difficult for him to access because we had this hearing happening here and the door, the double doors were not able to open. So we really need to have a place that is easy compliant as well as a place that allows us to adhere to the IRS disclosure and privacy rules and tax spirits information. I'm sorry, I'm very nervous. If you guys have any questions? And lastly, I'm so sorry, we also really would need like to, you know, have our K-9 program reinstated. But if we were to choose
Sorry, your what?
I'm sorry, not ours, to have the K-9 program back on Rota. So we are asking also for funding for the K-9 program. So if you guys have any questions, I do my best to answer them.
Thank you, Agri Hokup. Let me start off with just asking a couple of follow-up questions. In regards, I know you stated that you're going to submit a revised budget. Do you have the amount of how much you need for office rental?
Um, yes, I do. I will be needing thirty-six thousand dollars.
For the entire year?
For the entire year, yes.
Were there any plans to find a more permanent thing?
Yes, you know, we, we really would like to have a building constructed for the permanent home of the Department of Finance. I feel bad to ask for that at this moment, knowing our financial situation. But that is something that I hope will happen for the department in the next few years. This department has been moved more than any other department. Excuse me for sounding motion. So having something more permanent for them would, would be the best thing for this department.
Has this, um, has this been brought up to the mayor in terms of trying to get this for the ARPA fund?
I did share with the mayor and the secretary of finance, the idea and the plan for it. And in as much as they support it, of course, the question of where is the money going to come from? A building here on Rota is, is not going to cost just a million dollars. You know, we don't, we have to import a lot of the material and that is very costly here. So with all those questions still up in the air, where are we going to get the aggregate? Where are we going to get the building blocks? Do we have enough cement here on the island? It would be very irresponsible and selfish of me to ask for that at this moment. But yes, the mayor does support it as well as the secretary of finance. The plans are in the works, it's just when this The plans are in the works, it's just when is the responsible, realistic, and right time to put that into effect? If you guys are able to give me that, I could leave my term feeling like I did something.
Thank you. Uh, I'm seeing that under the revenue tax division, there is a shortfall of around fifty thousand. That's inclusive of the ARPA funds that was proposed. Uh, I know you mentioned that you do plan to give raises to these staffs. So how much of this will be the raise and how many more FDEs are you looking for?
That shortfall is the salary for the new FDEs that I had requested for. And that's the tax tech three and the enforcement officer. So that is what that shortfall is. Everybody else, once those two staff members get promoted, I'm hoping that everyone under that would go up as well to just occupy their former positions. Because the staff of revenue and tax have been, have been there without a raise or a promotion, some of them for over ten years. But yet, they are expected to perform the same duties and provide the same public service as every other island. And the highest position that we have in there is a tax tech two with over ten years of service. And that salary that they're working with, you cannot sustainably live on Rota with that salary. So if there's anything that you guys can do to change the salary range of that division, we would really appreciate that. That's to make it a lot more competitive because it is a revenue generating division. It is an enforcement division. And it just is really unfair that we are asking them to do the work that they do at such a very low salary.
And just one more for now. Under customs, you said you had six funded through the municipality and then two from Saigon. Is there a reason why these two are funded from Saigon? And is there a shortfall on the current number of customs officers that you have now? Is there a need for more or are they accumulating overtime hours?
They are, the, the updated regulation states that there needs to be two customs inspectors at every floor. We have three, but we also, you know, have the central office as well. So they do incur a lot of overtime because there is only that many of them. I requested to have two more new FDEs, but with the merger of the four quarantine communities, that fixes that problem.
Thank you, Ari Ayew, for now. The floor is now open. I recognize Reverend Zama.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for all your testimony. I envy you to come here and ask for help. We went through a pandemic. And as I come into this building, at one point in time, this building was closed. There was no circulation. So I looked at it, I says, doesn't this building need a pay job? These are the things that affect us today. So that recovery or rescue plan should be used for this. And I know that you have what's called wear and care. Have you included vehicles that you have? How old is your vehicle right now? May I ask you?
We have two and they both belong to the custom services. We're giving one, where customs takes one of the trucks and then we use the sedan here for the administration, the accounting, and the revenue and tax uses.
So do you, in need?
We are in need and we did, we did request. The mayor is going to assist us with whatever shortfalls, especially in regards to the vehicle.
Sure. And that's one of the things that is being calculated and continues for. I'm just saying, yes, you're just in need of help. And so thank you for coming up here and saving us. Not afraid to tell us. Thank you, I do thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Zama. Up next, Reverend Frohman.
I thought it's a cup of coffee. I have to get a new one. Director Hoekluk, thank you for coming today and thank you for welcoming us to your beautiful island of Rota. We're so happy to be here. And of course, thank you for all you do. Really grateful with the challenges that you have. And I have no doubt that you, you know, should have a new building. I was just wondering if you looked into the possibility of using an existing building and retrofitting it or something like that with regard to cost rather than doing brick and mortar and starting from the ground up? We've seen, just driving around, there's, we've seen some buildings. I don't know if it'd be adequate size for you, but has that option been explored? To utilize an existing building and then to find, you know, something that would work for your department? Thank you.
I just need to say this, okay? We're not complaining about the space that we're in. We're very grateful for it, but it's just not adequate. The community of Rota is going to be one of the most resilient that you will ever meet. We may deal with what we can. Yes, we have explored existing buildings, but unfortunately, there is not enough space at the Rota High School where the other departments are. The only available one is on the second floor and that is not going to work for ADA compliance. So the next best thing we had was to move over to MRC. That way, the funding will go into the college. We've tried checking buildings, as you say, there's many vacant here. But sometimes, especially with the federal, you know, the looming of the federal funds coming in, they want to raise the prices. And I cannot ask, you know, the mayor or Secretary of Finance or the governor, even yourselves, to give me the ten thousand dollars that some of them are asking for. So we're looking for something reasonable. And two of them, you know, so far has submitted in something that is closer to three thousand and under. So we're not looking for luxury. We really aren't. We're just looking for a space to work that these people can have pride in coming to work and knowing that they have a permanent home. So that's the reason why we wanted a building. There is, there isn't a municipal building that is available. And the ones that are are just in really bad states. So renting is the short-term plan. Building new building is the long-term. And we're hoping to at least work from there. Otherwise, we will still be here. Like the services and the jobs that these guys do will continue and will be rendered, irregardless of where we are.
Thank you for the clarification, Director. Thank you. Chairman Ayew?
Uh, the floor is now open for any members. I recognize Reverend Staffel.
Thank you, Chairman. Welcome and thank you, or thank you for welcoming us. I want to commend you for wanting to invest in the professional development of your staff. I was actually really curious, how long have you been operating with trainees?
Well, I just got onboard last year of October. And we've been very blessed that the MOU from Saigon was able to be here to train our revenue and tax people. We are also avail to online training. And between the mayor and the Secretary of Finance, they fund all the travel and the expenses to have the staff of the department trained. As a matter of fact, next week, the mayor will be flying out revenue and tax enforcers to get trained on, you know, how to deal with the poker establishments and all else. So I really can't take any credit. These guys do all the work. I'm just here to support them.
Thank you. So prior to your coming onboard, the training, the trainees, because what you had said is that, you know, you were, you had trainings, but you didn't have the next level. So you wanted to get people out of the training category, is what I understand. Is that right?
Yes, I mean, they have new trainees. And they're, they've been doing the work of beyond the training. So we need them promoted. I am too. Thank you, Ayew.
Thank you, Reverend Staffel. Any other members? I recognize Reverend Zama.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, Ms. Director Hoekluk. I want to follow up on Representative Staffel's question. You mentioned the need for professional development and you mentioned the training that has been provided thus far. Could you elaborate on what additional training you hope for for your staff coming up? And what types of resources would you need for that?
Well, each division has different needs. Our accounting division, the financial services division, you know, accounting and financial tools, they're updated all the time. So we need them to make sure that they're up to date with the changing trends. A lot of those were very fortunate that we can avail to them online. But there are some that require our accounting manager to be physically on Saigon. Just to assure that Rota is not forgotten at the table. And that is very important to me. Because it is time and age where we try to say that the convenience of an online meeting is something that is a cost saver. It works negatively for us. Because you cannot physically connect with someone you are not physically present with. A lot of times, you know, they get forgotten because the other members aren't physically talking to each other. They forget that somebody is on Zoom. You know, the problem with those kinds of trainings is people, culturally, we don't really ask questions. So adding technology in that is foreign to us, makes it more intimidating. But if they were physically there and able to bring in our contribution and put a face to what it is that Rota needs, then it makes it more beneficial and advantageous for us. The procurement, they're going to be changing the systems for it. I don't also want to have the same happen to them. Where they get it online because it's convenient and it's more convenient. And then they miss out because, you know, connection issues and they didn't hear the instructions too well. A lot of times, hands-on is more, is a lot better. So I would like them to be able to travel to Saigon and be present for that. Because Rota's needs is never going to be the same with Saigon's needs. How we operate here is totally different from how the central government in Saigon operates. For every employee here, they do the job of about three people, but they just take one position. And we did, we expect, they expect that we provide the same service and have the same results. And everything expected of one employee in Saigon is what they offer here. So we would just like to also be included on those things. Revenue and tax, like I said, um, they've, they've been getting their tax training and it's been working out. But we need training, we need them to be passported to, in order to go out and have an authority behind enforcement. That's in place of a badge, is what I was saying. And they need to train our enforcement trainee. Because that person has been working here for so long, it's a title they never have it in the background. Custom services, they always need to have, they always have updated trainings. So, you know, there's a lot and I can't name them at this moment.
So at this point, the training is available. The resources you need would be to get your staff up to Saigon.
It doesn't have to be every single training, right? Just the critical, crucial ones that really, really matter to the job.
And your staff has been included in the CNMI Department of Finance's transition to the National Financial Management System?
Um, yes, the secretary is going to include them in order. And the mayor, the mayor subsidizes our department a lot. From travel to suppliers to everything we need to operate.
So I just have a couple more questions, Mr. Chairman. You know, there's been a lot of money coming in, you know, with stimulus packages and the influence of stimulus checks, child tax credits. And, you know, there's been a lot more work for the divisions of revenue taxation across the Commonwealth. And I guess I wanted to ask you, did you see, like, did you have the staff, the manpower, out of it to do that kind of increase in it here or there?
Well, they got the job done. So whether to say they are adequately staffed, it's hard to say. You know, they work overtime. We close at, we close the window at one o'clock so that they can catch up on their end of, end of day duties. Because it's holiday their stuff. And, you know, they work after work. They work during their lunch. And they work very hard. What one person does at revenue and tax probably takes two or three people at the other islands. So that's why I said it's hard to answer your question. Do I believe we are adequately staffed? No. Are these women capable to run it by themselves? They showed that the answer is yes. But is it fair? If they're expected to perform like that, then they should be just be compensated.
Thank you for that. My last question is about the K-9 program. You mentioned wanting the funding to bring that back to Rota. And could you explain what happened to that program? That it was, I guess, suspended or suspended here? And how much money are we talking to reinstate the program here?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't answer you. And so what happened to it? That was way before my time. So I can't even, I don't even want to dare give you any background information on that because it'll probably not be accurate. The figure that we were looking at- The figure that we were looking at for the K-9 program is into like the 260,000. Because the officer K-9 is non-cherished. That requires the FDE of the handler as well as training for both, both officers. Then there's the maintenance of, of the K-9 officer. That's the meals, um, the shots, as well as, you know, we have to update the facility that is located up there at the airport. There is one with existing, but it is not up to par. We need to raise the, the fence on that. We need to have a cover, some shelter for it to exercise. There needs to be AC in there for the dog. So, it's, it's a lot of stuff that, that goes into that program and we are well aware of that. I know sometimes the argument might be that ROTA does not have a drug problem. There's a reason why we don't have a drug problem, because we try to keep it out of here. We want that K-9 program here so it stays out of here. Do we have drugs on ROTA? Yes. But is it the same as SitePAN? No. But I rather, and maybe I'm saying this because it's not my money, but I'd rather that we spend money on a K-9 program that keeps drugs out of ROTA than for a small amount of, of the drugs to come in and then it ends up in my home, consumed by my child. So, whether or not they find out, you guys find out work, it is up to you. But it, it, that's what it means and is worth to us here on ROTA.
Thank you, Representative. Going back to the K-9 program, um, I mean, I read in the paper that at least with the US Postal Service and SitePAN, customs officers have been intercepted drugs. Are any, do you know if any of our mail, maybe it goes through some kind of inspection before coming to ROTA? And if not, have we ever intercepted any drugs through the mail?
Um, if you were to visit the post office, you will see the customs inspectors in the lobby. They are there every day, whether or not there are drugs to be found. They do inspect, so active inspection does happen. Um, I'm not sure if, if I should answer about whether a lot of drugs are intercepted here. I'd probably feel more comfortable if you guys have all our customs inspector who takes care of that program. I don't want to divulge information that I should not be giving. So, if you guys like, I could check with our customs ally to see whether that's something that they can do. I hope you guys can understand.
Yeah, if you can provide any information to the committee. Um, and one more thing that I have on here, do you currently have MOU?
Um, MOU from where?
From the mayor's office.
Yes, we have two.
MOU's and are they funded through the CARE type?
Um, one, one is. The other is on the mayor's own local account.
So, that one under the CARE, which I'm assuming is going to expire in September, what position is it, where are they assisting the air department?
Well, we, we have requested for, for an MOU in the hopes that we will have FDEs open and available in Revenue and Tax. Unfortunately, I cannot insert that person in their act because we have disclosures that, you know, disclosure requirements that they need to fulfill first. But the plan is for that person to, when everyone else gets promoted into Tax Tech 3 and Enforcement Officer, you know, the position that was a Tax Tech mission one, that will be where they will be inserted, hoping that, you know, they had on-the-job training this entire time while that's going on.
Okay, so the two FDEs that you're requesting, which is a Tax Tech 3 and Enforcement Officer, will open to next, to next year?
Yes.
All right, and our members have any other questions? I recognize your representative.
I'll speak on. You mentioned, um, your customs officers accumulate overtime, a lot of overtime. How much, um, per year?
How much per year do they accumulate in overtime, your customs people?
I'm sorry, I would have to get back to you on that, I was not prepared with that information. Maybe I haven't looked it up in a while when we're talking.
Thank you for that. You also mentioned, going back to the MOU's, you mentioned two MOU's with the Officer Mayor and one from the central government in SitePAN. Would it be possible to provide this committee with a copy of those MOU's? Is there any people?
I'm sorry, what, what copies is it?
Of the MOU's?
Oh, a copy of the MOU.
Yes. Would it be possible to get a copy of that?
I, I don't see where that would be a problem.
Thank you, we appreciate it. Were there many people that, in, in the Department of Finance that were either furloughed or terminated since March of 2020 and have they been recalled?
We had, um, three personnel furloughed and they have all been reinstated. Yes.
One other thing. We certainly have, as you all know, over 500 million dollars coming to the CNMI. And I appreciate your humility in saying that it would be selfish and irresponsible and now is not the right time for you to ask. But I would suggest that now is the right time for you to ask the governor. And it is certainly incumbent on the mayor to request for these fundings through ARPA. So, I, I would suggest that you go back to the table with the mayor and pay a visit or give a call to the governor and ask for the much-needed funding for the municipality of ROTA. Because now is the right time. Thank you. Ayew.
Thank you, Representative Staffler. And I recognize the floor. Thank you. I'm actually not really related, but just to get an outlook of the item, with regards to stimulus, the amount of funds that were coming in. Is there, is, 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 is it taking economy noise here in ROTA or are the residents spending the money outside? Whether it's sending it back, purchasing items from ROTA and, or sending it out to the Philippines or wherever. So, I guess my question is, is, is there a spike with regard to what the residents are spending the money on? Just to get an idea of where is the funding leaving, is it staying or leaving? We have a harder time in the CNMI and SitePAN where most of our money is already even there. Just want to get a, is there a picture here?
Well, I know a lot of people who have spent their money buying cars that they've, they've long needed, so we have an increase in traffic here. But as far as everything else, it remains the same. You know, the stores, the stores are the same, the prices are, they're still as high as ever. People, people mostly buy their groceries in SitePAN and get it shipped over. But I know there's a company out of SitePAN that is trying to help the people in ROTA by not raising their prices too much. But, you know, we're, we're aiming and we're trying to have more of our people spend their money here. So, one of the things that we're going, we're trying to do in the procurement services is to create a vendor-approved program where the businesses here apply into the program. They have to be compliant, they have to have all their taxes paid, their business license current, and then we see all the needs of every department here. And we try to make it as fair as possible where everybody just puts in a bulk order to disperse this vendor and so forth. That way, we try to keep our money here. But also, you know, we need it to be at a fair price because everything is so much more expensive here. It is always, it is always cheaper to buy outside of ROTA. But the prices will never be competitive if you continue to buy everything outsourced at SitePAN, and wrong, and abroad. So, we're hoping to try to change that, but it's, they're very expensive here. I don't know whether, where you guys ate or who you guys bought drinks at our stores, but you can't really buy anything with a dollar. You need, you need at least a dollar twenty-five to drink.
So, is the idea, it's going to stay now? Nothing is like, just very?
If anything, you know, it's starting to pick up because now people can fly in. It's kind of hard to answer your question, of course, with the, with the pandemic, everything shut down, so everything's stopped. But when everybody was able to go out, they started shopping, they started eating now. But yeah, other than eating at the restaurants and buying cars, those are the only two things that people think is a splurge on.
Thank you, Flor. I think after the budget hearing, you'll see our PGR people. Members, we are, we've reached our time with the R and E of Finance, so I will maybe pass it on to one more if anyone has any question. Rava Bhaktham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Director Hokkuk, for being with us today. I believe that the Department of Finance serves as the heart of our government. This is where all of our government contracts flow through. It's where tax is collected, it is where our tax enforcement laws, laws are being enforced. And so, thank you for giving us and providing us an idea of how it works here on ROTA and how it's different from SitePAN. According to the analysis provided to us by our fiscal analyst, Dave Demokan, all four of your divisions are underfunded. Financial Accounting by sixteen, seventeen thousand, and that's a combination of personnel and operations. Revenue and Taxation by fifty thousand. Procurement and Supply by four thousand. And Customs by around five hundred dollars. Have you made that analysis yourself?
Well, we looked into that and that sixteen thousand is an error. That was the carried-on retirement contribution of the former director, so that should not be there. That almost fifty thousand that you're seeing for Revenue and Tax, that was the salaries that I requested for the two FDEs of the Tax Tech Mission 3 and the Revenue Enforcement Officer. Now, the amount for Procurement and Supply, I believe that that is an error. We're still looking into where that amount come from. And the, um, Customs, that five hundred dollars is probably also just an error.
Okay, well, these are based on the numbers provided to us by the department's request to the governor, the governor's proposal, and then inclusive of the proposed ARPA funding. So, we are basing our numbers off of the numbers provided to us.
Probably, I apologize for that.
Yeah, no, we, I just want to ensure that this is brought to your attention and the attention of Mayor Athelick as well as Secretary of Finance, Dave Athelick, because of all the needs that you have already shared with us.
Yeah.
Right? And so, I really appreciate you sharing your mission of maintaining public trust, modeling good governance, investing in professional development, your facility needs, your salary increases, and equipment needs. You also touched on enforcement and how you currently have a trainee conducting enforcement, is that right?
A trainee cannot conduct enforcement, so they were there and not able to do their job.
Okay, so, is that trainee under which Division of Finance?
Division of Revenue and Tax.
Revenue and Tax. And so, right now, how many enforcement officers do you have for each division?
We have two enforceable. One of them, one of them, which is the, the trainee, is, is, that is there, they have to be funded for enforcement. The other enforcer who received training and his passport is actually a Tax Tech 2. But because that enforcement person was furloughed, we had her trained to pick up the slack and perform the jobs of that person gone. But, you know, we found out that you can't do anything if you don't, if you don't have the title, you don't have the training, and you are not passported. So, what those guys are doing is actually outreach education. And that actually was good for us because we found out that people are not trying to cheat the government. They just honestly did not know. So, we're changing, we're, we're working on education into our, into our community. And when the boats come in, they go to the seaport and they educate the, the business committee here. When the, when the flight comes in, they go up to the airport, they visit the stores and they, they remind them, constantly remind them about our receipt law. So, it's just one of those things where people who are, are not trying to, to break the law, they just really didn't know. And that's something that we're trying to address. Before we can enforce, we need to educate. But it's not fair to, to do that if they, they didn't know.
I completely agree with you. I completely support public education when it comes to our laws or policies. I also believe in enforcement and maintenance. And so, it really does sound like an enforcement issue does exist with tax and rev. And how long has that been a issue?
I, I can't tell you how long it's been an issue. I can tell you how long it's been an issue since I've been on board.
That's right, because you started it just last.
Just.
So, uh, just continuing on with enforcement, can you tell us the daily average collection?
I'm so sorry, I don't have that information. I could get that to you soon.
Okay, that would be very much appreciated because I believe the numbers, if you can tell us what the daily average collection looks like for ROTA, um, then, you know, that would definitely justify the needs of your department. Just given the fact that, you know, if there is major workload, then there are many needs, right? And so, the daily collection average is something that I'm very interested in. In regards to the financial system, the new financial system that has been implemented and training has come for ROTA, as stated, do you have the equipment that, that can accommodate the train? Do you have computers?
We, we have computers. Um, they're, they're old computers, they still work.
How old are your computers?
No, they're very old. They, we're, we're going to be getting new computers, just with the secondary plans that share with me. So, I had actually told them that I don't want any new equipment here until, you know, we have, we have certain issues here and I don't want, um, I don't want them to do damage before that time. But we were hoping actually to be, the timeline we had, when I had requested that to not have it here was, we should be moving at this present moment and not stopping here. it here was, we should be moving at this present moment and not stopping here. But we were waiting for contracts with NMC to happen, and it's stalled. I can't, I can't tell you why that stalled on NMC's part.
Thank you, Director. And my last question is in regards to the executive order, two zero two one dash zero nine, that you have already mentioned, combining the Division of Quarantine and the Animal Health Services under the Division of Customs, which fall under the Department of Finance. And so, I just wanted to state for the record, and for members of the committee members' information, that this executive order was signed on April twenty-eighth, and there have been concerns brought to my attention, because I do chair the Natural Resources Committee, on the, on the combining of these divisions, mostly in part because of very complex policies and regulations that the Division of Quarantine is required to uphold. And that is something that is very important, I know to many of our community members, because they keep our natural resources safe and protected, right? And so, just for the record, I'm very glad that you're sharing information on it. It was signed on April twenty-seventh, and it will become effective sixty days after it was submitted to the legislature, unless it's modified or disapproved by majority of the members of each of the House. So, just given that information, given your initial assessment, and maybe discussions with the Director of Customs here on Rota, have you discussed any concerns in regards to taking on the responsibility of these two divisions, two very complex and very important divisions in our community? And that's the Division of Quarantine and the Division of Animal Health and Safety.
Um, I think there was an amendment to that executive order not to include the Animal Health Services, but it's just the quarantine. Director Moudmas will be coming to Rota so that he can better, you know, give us a better picture of how this whole thing is going to work out. I had faith that, you know, they didn't do this just frivolously. There was planning involved, and there was a reason why they, they thought that it needed to merge over into customs. So, I'm waiting for, for that day to come so that we can better understand. It has caused, of course, emotional stress for mainly the ones who are transitioning in, because they're not sure what is, what is going to happen to them. But they're also positive about it, because it means their salaries will go up. And, you know, it might not, it means different things to me to different people, but to those whose salaries will go up, it means a lot. It's something, some of, one of them has been there almost twenty years, and is only making twenty-seven thousand.
Thank you for sharing that. I do look forward to analyzing these executive order and maybe our company will also impact governmental operations and all. But it is reassuring to know that Rota and neighboring islands are going to be included in training and just a big information. So, I do hope that in the process of planning and analyzing, analyzing of this merger, what's the consideration. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Reva Mutha. At this time, President Director Hokuk, if, if we have any additional questions or concerns or views, if we have anything else you want to add, please feel free to reach out to the committee, and should you want additional time, or should you need an audience, please feel free to, as no one will try to schedule anything further. We do have the President Director for Commerce here, so, I just want to think it's time to thank you and your team for your presentation today. And again, if there's anything else you need from the committee, this is your division. Please feel free to reach out. And so, with that, I'll leave it to you to provide any closing remarks.
I want to thank you guys all for coming out to Rota and for giving the time to speak to us. The MOUs that you requested for and the information that you guys all asked for, as soon as I leave here, I will get that ready for you. You guys enjoy Rota while you're here. Please get full, and as the mayor always says, spend your money there. If you need help, we can give you the list of all the vendors who sells X, Y, and Z. Travel home safely. Please thank your families for allowing you guys to come here and join us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next we have the Department of Commerce. Are you in interest of time? Let's go ahead and have you provide your statement.
All right, good afternoon. For the record, my name is Director Dean Gray Attulbun, and the resident department head for the Department of Commerce here. So, if I hadn't, I'm currently handing out a copy of my budget submission for fiscal year twenty-two. Here the island of Rota, if I could, I was just listening back there with Joey, are they spending the stimulus money? The answer is yes, yeah. In fact, there's a boat coming in May seventeen, and that boat is full, full of cars, and other products that are going to be imported into the island of Rota. We can just jump right into it, yeah, and indeed, apologies again. Thank you again, Chairman Naglonya, Vice Chairman, and the distinguished members of the Ways and News Committee. Welcome to the beautiful island of Rota. If I may begin by just reading out a mission statement for the Department of Commerce. So, can I help navigate my thinking process? So, the Rota Department of Commerce exists to promote economic growth in partnership with our local community, businesses, schools, government agencies to the regulation and promotion of commercial exchange. So, so far, what we have done, what we have, what we intend to do, we actually did a soft opening for Business Incubation Center. So, as the resident department head, I am currently working with a nonprofit group that was contracted through the Economic Development Administration. IABC stands for International Economic Development Council. So, what the, what this group does is it offers expert knowledge on economic recovery. So, currently working with a list of consultants. Part of our finances is with regards to the Business Incubation Center. Now, it's, it's challenging, because for a business incubation to be established in Rota, it's going to need three parts, the programs, mentoring, and, programs, mentoring, and the space. So, right now, we have the, one, one part of that triangle covered. We got the space, and we're actually working on getting the equipment. So far, I was able to successfully work with the recruitment of our, from the Small Business Development Center, Sitepan. We do have booths on the ground, we have a short-term contract employee that's working with the local restaurants. He utilizes the restaurant revitalization fund. So, it's a, it's a really good opportunity, and what he does is he provides one-on-one consultation with the local businesses. So, very interesting stuff. In fact, a document that, a view that was introduced, and it was shared to me via email this, Bio, what was that? Bio, okay, right. Bio Prospecting, is that right? Yeah. So, yeah, I was actually very, very interested in, you know, we, sometimes you're going to think outside the box, or sometimes you just got to blow up the box and just really get a, get a new box. You know, so this is very critical, we're in a very critical position with a, a turning point, if you may, because this is a great opportunity, and I, I don't think, with a modern day pandemic, provide also, provides a lot of opportunity. And also, we want to make sure that we leverage a lot of these funds. Based on my budget submission, if I, according to the analysis that was shared with me by the legislature's budget analyst, you know, it does appear that with the governor's proposal, the Department of Commerce will be short, we can, seventeen thousand four hundred ninety-nine.
So...
Yeah. So, yeah, but, but definitely, um, so if, if we do the breakdown, what, what this covers is actually my current staff plus two additional employees. And it's actually critical for my operation. I currently have one law enforcement officer, and as part of our regulation, we actually have to do inspections with two law enforcement officers. It, it's important for safety, one, and it's also important to have, you know, that confirm and confirm communication between the two officers. That way, if it turns into a legal issue, we go into a business establishment, and then they, you know, there's always two, two instances where we see, so it's always that concurrent, confirm, confirm and concurrent. Definitely, with Rota, it has, has a lot of challenges, and a lot of it has to do with the things that are outside of our control, right? So, monetary prices, I know that, since my legislature did introduce nineteen dash sixty-two to try to alleviate the cost of shipping to the island of Rota. So, yeah, there are, there are actions that are being taken to try to ease the burden, you know, so the cost of commodities in Rota is very high, and the cost of energy also, so, you know, we can't. Without an energy plan, we have no economic plan. We have to figure out a way to make energy cheaper for a local business community, and it's something that, I know that the Office of Grants Management is working on, trying to work itself, and we're probably going to see the fruits of that labor very soon. So, I'm happy to take any questions at this time. You know, Mr. Chairman, if you...
Uh, thank you, RNE. So, your, your initial request was for five FTEs. What you're saying is that you need, you actually need additional FTEs?
Uh, yes, that is correct.
And what positions are there?
So, we currently have, we currently have a staff of three, including myself, that's four, so five will just include one additional employee, which is a statistics specialist one. But the two additional FTEs is, one is the Economic Development Specialist, and the ABTC Law Enforcement Training, assisted by law enforcement officers. So, yeah, the Economic Development Specialist is basically the, going to be the key person that's going to be operating and pushing the programs under the Rota Business Incubation Program. So, that way, we really want to get our focus to economic development, which is a big issue, health, healthcare and economic area, you know, too, because we want to, we want to have a roadmap to see how we can, you know, change, help the economy, you know, over the next two years.
Okay, and you mentioned that, based on your submission, with the general fund proposal and the ARPA funds, you're still short on a, around seventeen thousand. Was this seventy thousand for the initial request of five FTEs, was this to increase salary, or what?
Uh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's for new hires, new hire position, new hire position, new FTEs. So, yeah, the initial request for the five positions, you actually, you know, equal to one hundred seventy-seven thousand one hundred thirty-one. So, that's the department's request. So, yeah, yeah, if you look at the governor's proposal, in addition to the APR, which is forty-seven thousand two hundred eleven, yeah, there is a shortage of seventeen thousand four ninety-nine. But I, I don't know that there's going to be a budget revision on July first, hopefully, and then we can, we can get those things out. I'll do, I'll make sure that I speak with the mayor, you know, we have those positions of the money, because they are needed, and they are critical to the department's operation. We really think efficiency and efficiency, and we want to make sure that we have that continuity of government, always in our mind, right? Continuity of services.
Okay, uh, thank you, RNE. In addition, from my understanding, your submission, your request, I guess, that one was due, was based on austerity, you know, is there something that you would need additional funding for that? Is it covered in, or that exceeds your request, say, as to, yeah, any things regarding that austerity?
Uh, yes, that is absolutely correct. And thank you, Chairman, Mr. Chairman, for highlighting that. Upon my submission, February twenty-sixth of that budget, I was operating conservatively. You know, I was operating under the guise that we might not have enough funding, so I needed to prioritize what my department needed originally. So, that's why I submitted such little numbers. But yes, in terms of resources, in terms of manpower, I do, I could use a little more help, you know, so we are, we are in a recovery stage, and the, the economy needs to get the numbers right, which is our central statistics division. We've got to make sure that we're doing our data collection, we've got to make sure that we're, you know, following up with enforcement, and then with our economists, is working with the local businesses, local entrepreneurs, to help help them develop. So, we do have a Economic Development, Division of Economic Development, and a lot of that focus has been on export. But what we're fighting here at the island of Rota is that not a lot of people produce anything, you know, there's very few people that produce products. So, that's why the Business Incubation Center is so important, is because we want to get them to the level where, where they're producing. And it's a lot of, a lot of work, a lot of research, and sometimes the locals just don't have the resources, just don't have the technical knowledge, expertise, in order to develop products. Some of them have really great ideas, but they just don't have the guidance to get those ideas rolling, you know, as a business and turn it into business. So, that's why it's, it's really important, and I feel very strongly about that Business Incubation Center. Right now, we're operating as a business resource center, not an incubation center, simply because funding business, you know. I did include in the budget ten computers. We're, we're starting to notice that a lot of businesses are transitioning into the online market, and we got to be ready to start training our young entrepreneurs to take that route, and start building more businesses online, become less dependent to the tourism economy, although we are dreaming back to research at this time, but hopefully we can expand our horizon with a, a little bit of measuring from the department and a little assistance from us, the Small Business Development Center.
Thank you, RNE. Uh, before I move, I recognize you for something.
Good afternoon, Mr. Magdola, RNE. Thank you for your presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, Naglonya.
That's okay, my name's Magdola.
Um, I am so excited to hear about this business incubator, and, and I just wanted to get a little more information about, you know, the prospects for, for getting this up and running, and, like, maybe we could just start with, like, what was the amount of the grant, and is there a local match that was required?
Well, the facility itself was built through a, a community improvement project, like a, like a, some, I heard some conversations where we utilized an old building, existing building, and we renovated it. So, we utilized an existing building and improved upon its foundation, and then just build the Business Incubation Center. So far, we don't have a grant, but I am working with PSS, and they, we've developed a program where they, they call it the EDO's, EDO's Innovation, what was that? Business Bootcamp. So, that starts June twenty-eighth to August eighteenth. So that starts June twenty-eighth to August eighth. So at the end of that program, they're actually going to receive three college credits from the Northern Mariners College, a certification. And they're also going to have a pitch fest in the end of the program where they actually get to pitch their business idea to a panel of judges and then they're going to select a winner.
And these are high school students?
These are high school students, yeah. So we are, we are, we're in the program development stage where we're trying to develop these programs for adults. And even one of my passions, you know, I've been speaking with the director for DCCA and in a lot of these lack of resources, a lot of the issues that they're talking about is that they don't have transportation and they don't have a babysitter. But guess what? If you operate a business and you operate a business online, you don't need transportation, you don't need a babysitter. You can make a living doing everything online. So that helps them get out of that poverty state and then that way, you know, it's a win-win. Our community earns revenue and then one percent or our local citizens start to alleviate, you know, the financial stress, especially now during the pandemic. So definitely, we're really trying to empower them and just give them the tools. And we call it tool stacking, or I'm sorry, uh, skill stacking. So we're gonna stack their skills to a level where they're able to operate on their own.
Yeah, maybe I misunderstood. I thought you said that there was an EDA group that, and you were working with this network.
Yes, the EDA grant funds the technical expertise. So EDA is funding the IEC International Economic Development Council. So the Economic Development Council provides technical support to our department and to any other agencies that are in need of, of technical support. So right now, what we're working with is the RODA Coffee Project. We do have a consultant that's working with the Director of Lands and Natural Resources to try to develop the RODA coffee. So what we found is that what we have here in the island is called heritage coffee. And in that word itself, heritage is being promoted all over the coffee world, right? There's even a narrative, so we're trying to promote RODA heritage coffee.
Wow, well, I love coffee, so please keep us posted.
Yeah.
Because it's my first heritage coffee. Okay, so, which actually brings me to my next question. You mentioned some partnerships and how critical they are for your mission. So are you working with NMC Crease, potentially like to get the value-added products developed from your agricultural industries?
You know, I would love to work with NMC Crease. In fact, I used to employ NMC Crease. I used to do inspections and I worked for the Foresting Development Program for five years. Right now, we're working with their academic site because they are going to provide business credits at the end of the bootcamp. So not yet with NMC Crease, but I did put in a request for a vehicle and the main reason is we already have a sedan and we wanna start taking data on our farms. But a lot of our farms are in remote locations that a sedan can get to. So that's why a lot of our data collectors really require that equipment, so they go out there, get our numbers right. You know, I do understand that DNR was collecting information on sweet potato. If I'm not mistaken, back in twenty-seventeen, RODA exported one hundred forty-six thousand pounds of sweet potato. So we are producers, we just need to be better businessmen and women.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Ardi, and I know Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, everyone. For our, I recognize you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. You're, you could have to move just a quick question. I noticed that you did not request funding for the statistics specialist and stepped in, do you want?
Yeah, because I had a statistical technician, I was, because like I said, when I submitted that budget, I was being conservative. I really wanted to get those two positions funded and the only way I could see it is I had to sacrifice one of my. So in that way, I could at least get those two positions funded. Because right now, we do have a statistics technician onboard and we just do quality collections of the consumer price index.
So are you going to be submitting?
Yes, yes, and when we do a revision of that budget on July first, definitely. And that's going to be quite hard to ask for a higher salary.
So would you consider?
So that interest, yeah. Definitely, sure, I'm sure, yes.
Thank you, guys. Members, anyone else have any questions they wanna ask? I recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Maglola, for joining us today. I too am very excited to hear about the Small Business Incubator. I was a small business owner and so I definitely understand the needs of a small business owner. And like you said, right, like we just need the support and the help to get started because our people are very creative and very talented. And I think that if we could share more of our talents and our creations with the world, it will just do us good. It will do so much good. So I'm very happy to hear about that happening on RODA. We have experienced all that RODA has to offer, even being on Saipan, you know, things getting exported from RODA, shared on Saipan, so we're all, I'm very excited and happy to hear about that. I'm glad that statistics and data was brought up earlier and that you are looking to fund that position. So currently, how are you collecting data?
We do have a methodology that we utilize to collect data, to consumer price index. Sometimes we do receive requests from other agencies for data collection. We do work with our federal counterparts sometimes, you know, to try to get some information in terms of agriculture or, you know. Yeah, definitely, there is a methodology, right, and it really depends on the type of data that's being collected and, you know, different other factors, because it's just a lot.
Okay, and so you physically go out and collect data?
Yes, yes.
And then at the same time ask that data be reported to Congress?
Correct, right. We do report most of our data to the Central Statistics Division in Saipan, under the direction of Director Justin Andrews.
Okay, and currently, your facilities is located?
Oh, yeah, yeah. We did do a soft opening, but if we do do a grand opening, I'm gonna set up an invitation, definitely. So that you guys can see it for yourself, you know, the business incubation. It's located right now at the Liso compound, the old RODA High School down in the village.
Okay, and that is the incubator and?
Yeah.
The Department of Commerce?
Yes, they're both side by side, yes.
Okay, understood, understood. And I would like to move to enforcement. Can you speak on your enforcement team and also the type of collections or the type of compliance that we encountered?
Yeah, definitely. Just recently, because due to COVID, you know, we've asked to enforce additional duties, right? So we were also enforcing social distancing, social gathering and business mandates. So I currently have only one law enforcement officer in the island of RODA, which is why I'm requesting an assistant. So that way, we can have that continuity and we can have that safety net, you know. These officers are law enforcement officials and they're definitely trained to carry out their police responsibility.
And just to be clear, are you say law enforcement officers is other Department of Commerce or one aside from the Department of Police?
No, this, this division is, ABTC is law enforcement under the Department of Commerce.
So you have one assigned?
One assigned, yes.
And is that sufficient?
Right now, you know, I detail him to a lot of other things, like Director Hope said earlier, a lot of our staff are cross-trained and a lot of the time they have to go through different details. So I detail them to perform different duties. Thing about details is it's a temporary, temporary assignment. Sometimes these details go long-term, like, you know, a year, simply because we don't have a staff, but the job needs to get done. And I don't, I haven't heard any complaints from my staff. They're actually very, very motivated, very grateful to be still, to be still working, especially during the pandemic.
Hi, Chris. Thank you, thank you. How long have you been serving as the resident director for Comba?
I think since two thousand and seven.
Since two thousand and seven. So according to the budget that we have in front of us, it has decreased consistently since twenty nineteen. It was at around one hundred and seventy thousand, for twenty twenty, you were at one hundred and forty thousand. Twenty twenty-one at one hundred and twenty-four thousand. And then we requested for the twenty twenty-two budget, two hundred thousand. And now we'll be receiving, according to our numbers, two hundred and three thousand. So we're looking at, you know, like an eighty thousand, eight hundred thousand dollar increase. What are your priorities with that funding? I know that you, you talk about the Small Business Incubator, but how will you prioritize?
First, yeah, first and foremost, personnel. We'll focus first on the personnel, getting in the department staff. And then with the business incubator, I mean, I did communicate with the Office of Grants Management to try to get additional assistance, to try to provide those support needed. And especially because it's such a, it has a huge benefit to the community.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I look forward to, to, you know, the new businesses, to come on RODA and new products and services to be offered here because many of the community members, I think, would love to be in RODA. And so the next time we come back, we'll see more businesses, we'll have more producers, producers, all the natural, so thank you for making, thank you very much for me.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Any other members? Okay, it looks like the members are all set. President Director Maglola, if there's anything else that you wanna add at a later time, please feel free to reach out to the committee. The same with us, if you have any additional questions, we'll shoot that forward to you. So with that, we just wanna take this time to say thank you for coming in today and sharing the departments and the like my colleagues have said, we look forward to seeing the good work that you've just shared with us. Again, thank you. And if there's any closing remarks that you'd like to give now?
Um, yeah, yes, first of, first and foremost, I really wanna share my gratitude. I can really feel the energy in this room, you know, it's a lot of young guns. And I really like, I really like the whole energy. I think we're in a good place and we're not gonna get another opportunity to, you know, to make a real difference in our, in the Commonwealth. And I'm grateful that you guys have came out and you guys understand that we are very interested for this bounty. As well as say thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Ardi. All right, members, we're down to the last one and I do see here, we have the Department of Labor next. Just to give the members an understanding, the new Ardi of the Department of Labor just joined in about a month ago, if I'm not mistaken. And so please bear with her, I'm sure she's prepared, but if there's anything that you need that she's unable to provide, please allow her to share it with you or the committee at another time. And so with that, welcome, Resident Director, Department of Labor. I hand over the floor to you.
Thank you. And finally, I have some documents that I can pass out. Okay, this is my very first budget hearing. I would like to apologize if I seem to jump around. Feel free to jump in and set me straight. The documents that I passed out, it actually just reflects the difference between the two thousand nineteen budget versus the budget that I submitted this year. Back then, there were only four employees to include the resident department head. And late two thousand nineteen, they did hire one more individual, which is reflected on number five on the second chart on the bar. I just wanted to have the Ways and Means Committee acknowledge the additional FTE just in the event that there's any confusion. Everything else, according to the governor's proposal, I plan to receive with a balanced budget. The only negatives that I had from that governor's proposal is it had to do with the personnel. So that would be the difference with the additional FTE, WGI. I'm sorry, what I would do? What I do plan, if granted, the budget that is submitted by the governor, is to ensure that the personnel that we have right now receive the trainings that can keep them current to actually perform duties and responsibilities as regulated by the Department of Labor. And which is usually, our main goal is to employ a hundred percent US citizens or US residents. And with the additional funding that, if granted, that will allow us to have the team go up to Saipan or if possible, even inland, after all this COVID, the pandemic issues have been, I'm sorry, after all these pandemic issues, we have to. So if you guys take a look at the budget submission for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, that is the narrative. And this is actually just based by the narrative that was based on twenty twenty budget submission. The only additional funding is requested on the personnel training costs as well as the travel. Eventually, after all the personnel have received the training that I believe they should receive, a plan on opening or working with MNC, specifically MNDI, as well as Saipan DRL with the apprenticeship program. And to help our people learn trade skills so that if they are unable to find a regular 7:30 to 4:30 job, at least they have those trade skills to fall upon so that they are able to maybe open up their own businesses one way to stimulate the growth here in order, economic growth. Uh, any question?
Yeah, just quickly, um, so on your handout, front page, um, for currently, now your salary, uh, the total request is at 134,279. Right, that's the 179 minus the 45. And then on the proposal, it showed that you requested 135, which is close to that 134, but it was reduced by 16,000.
Are you talking about my salary, Congressman?
No, I'm talking about the request up here. The shortfall of 16,000.
Okay, um, the reason why it's showing up as a negative is because with my request for 2022, I didn't include, um, WGI's. So two of those personnel, the last time they ever received any increase was back in 2008. So I am currently asking for your consideration in actually giving them the salary that they actually deserve. Two of those personnel, um, it reflects two step WGI's. So that is where the shortfall comes from.
So your proposal is with the WGI?
That's correct.
And so that, so on your, on your sheet, the first base salary with the total of 179 minus the 45, that's around the 135 that you initially proposed. So that's with the inclusion of the WGI. So what is that portion of the, is that an additional WGI on top of here?
I stand corrected, Mr. Morna. Without my salary, the first column here on 2021 with 2022 base salary, that is the current salary that they have. So the very last column, which is on your base salary, that is the inclusion of the WGI that I'm requesting here.
Okay. So your base salary request without any increases minus the resident head is at 134,000. And that's what you need to fund these five, four FTEs.
That is correct.
And that's your request, close to your request on your proposal submission, but you will only be awarded in total combined, Jennifer and Arpa, 119,000. So you're like, you, I mean, you have a shortfall of 16,000. If I, as a fiscal analyst, is that, that, we just consider that a mirror or is that something?
I think the numbers are pretty straightforward. As you can see, we're looking about the civil service employees. And you look at the governors and the odd money, it's showing approximately 119,324. And what is, uh, the question is approximately 135,471. And therefore, there is an unfunded, uh, salaries of approximately 16,147. What was the, who did give the legislative meeting per year understand what's happening is that she has included the two-step increases.
No, well, what do you mean to her this is without any increases?
So if that's the case, then this difference relates specifically to salary differences between the salaries and the odd money and the requirements.
Okay, just to be clear, Ardi, the 179, 279, which includes the Ardi salary, all these, the remaining four FTEs, those are their current salary as of today without any increases?
That is correct.
Okay, so they would need the additional 16,000. Is that correct, Dave? To ensure that they...
If I'm reading this correctly, Ardi, are you, are you stating before this committee that we have here for now?
Yes, I do.
Okay, okay, please, if you look at the two columns here, there's a column here that says governor's proposal. And the governor under the civil service expenditure account is showing at 4,459 dollars. Okay, if you move to the right, you'll see the fourth column that's coming from the American rich, that's approximately 23,165. And you know, if you add those two sources of funding, we get approximately 119,324 dollars. Now, with your request of 135,471, we do the math and take the difference. There's showing an underfunding of approximately 16,147. The question here is, what does that variance or decrease reflect? Based on your testimony, a few minutes ago, you were saying that that represents, that difference of 16,000 approximately represents the within two-step increases of some of your employees. So if that's, if that's correct, then that's the reason why we're foreseeing a deficit or underfunding amount approximately 60 some thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, yes, Chairman, yeah. My understanding on this variance is the same as what the resident director is stating, that it reflects the difference of 60,000 dollars coming from the within two-step salary increases.
Further, Chairman?
Good to know.
Hmm, it's already applied?
Yes, it's included.
Okay, thank you. So, Ardi, my question actually falls into, into CW. Has Roda been getting any CW funds that you are aware of? Is, so when was the last time we received CW funds?
I do know at this time that the US PIS, with the Homeland Security, they are the ones handling the processing and everything in relation to CW employment. And as of right now, we have never received any information. We do not know of any funding that could possibly assist the Department of Labor. Saipan, I am not aware of any CW fees that maybe we can avail to. Maybe that is something that I can ask from all of you if it's possible to maybe assist us in available to a certain percentage of that CW funding or fees rather that our foreign workers pay in order to be employed in our, in our area.
Okay, we do provide the same support to the CW workers here on Roda.
That is correct.
Um, is there something that... Actually, um, you know, after this time, I will yield to any other members if they have any questions. I recognize your role.
Good afternoon, Ardi.
Good afternoon, sir.
Earlier this morning, the leader had mentioned there are plans to resurface the road to be in the highway. And I understand that would require quarantines from maybe a quarantise site. And because the mining and the quarry fall under the US Department of Labor now, I did not see any FTE included for a mining sector or safety or any quarantines here. Perhaps if you do decide to be something of a project, if anyone considers including that position, if the project is happening, this is still...
Well, no, sir. And as of right now, I do believe that the OSHA, the OSHA Division under the Department of Labor, which we don't exactly have for Roda in relation to that position that you, um, we might possibly consider. I would probably request for OSHA employees as well for Roda. I believe that is through a grant funding. So maybe that's something we can look into. But you are correct, we should have that employee to oversee the quarry, the compliance here.
So further now, I recommend, Arda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Ardi, for being here with us today. And just for clarification again, you have been serving this role for how long?
Um, I was confirmed as resident department head on February 18th.
Okay, okay, since February. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for providing this information to us and really just diving deep straight into the role of Ardi. According to the budget, um, let's see, some of the biggest parts of your operations falls under all others. Can you just expand on what we can expect is to be paid out of that line item under operations? All others? So you know, under operations, it's, um, it's listed various parts of a certain agency's operations like advertising, cleaning services, communications, equipment, fuel. And then there's all others. And that seems to be more than 20% of operations. So what kind of expenses fall under all others?
Well, um, when this budget was first submitted, I, I was under the impression that our conference, we don't have much. So, um, with this huge chunk, I would like to implement, um, or rather educate the people what the Department of Labor actually does. And if it takes additional, I know it's impossible to take care of ours under all others, but you know, any way that we can reach the community, um, if it's in terms of gassing, um, other departments and missing. Um, if we're able to publicly publish additional information for businesses or potential employees.
I see, I see, okay. So I completely support public education. I too agree that our community, you know, I think there's like a missing link. There's a lot of opportunity for us as leaders in our field to help our community understand the roles and duties of each department, each division, right, so that there's clarity. So I completely support that. And in your words, what is the Department of Labor here on Roda responsible for?
We are responsible for ensuring that both employees and employers are knowledgeable of what they are required to do and what they are expected to do. We also must follow the Fair Labor Standards Act, Civil Service Commission, because yes, we still have to take care of our government employees as well. The private sector, we do need to educate potential employees of how to, how to be good employers, how to take care of the employees, follow the minimum wage. I need them to learn how to compute overtime duties.
So how are these, like, resources, this kind of support being, how is it being offered to the stakeholders that you just mentioned? Do you use online platforms? Do you host, you know, community workshops? Do you pass off flyers?
Right now, our department is not capable of, um, we don't have that much funds for flyers. So we just go out and speak to the businesses. And even with that, sometimes it's hard because we do have two vehicles at this time. Both of them have brake, brake pad issues, tire issues. One of them is more than a decade old. So, you know, as much as possible, we do utilize emails, telephones, stuff like that. But in terms of platform, that's something that we have to work on.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
I agree. I think we all have that opportunity, even through legislation.
Yeah, I, I don't think they would agree to having a resident director who they probably think knows nothing about running the Department of Labor to make decisions for them. So usually what I like to do is sit down and work as a team and collaborate and see if we, how, how else we can resolve it with that.
Thank you. Um, my last question to Chairman and members is in regards to the CUA, the Pandemic Unemployment Assistance Program. So outside that, the CEO of my Department of Labor, right, is responsible for the issuance of the CUA funds and also responsible for, for addressing any concerns or issues of the human past, including fraudulent claims. And so what role does your department play on the issuance of CUA here on Roda?
Uh, issuance of CUA, not at all. The role that we play is more of administrative support. If they need weekly claims, we make copies for them. If they run out of paper, we give them paper.
And these are individuals you're speaking of?
I'm speaking of the two Roda coordinators that are, are stationed, well, not stationed, but they are hired here for better.
Okay.
Right now, they, uh, they are located at the Northern Marianas College, right next door.
Do they work with your department at all?
Not at all.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the CEO of my Department of Labor has placed two individuals here to carry out the CUA program on Roda.
That's correct.
And then there are some times where your office assists them with their needs?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, um, I used to be a CUA coordinator. Yeah, um, I used to be a PUA coordinator. So I started the intake, I would call it an intake, because I really did not have any access to the portal. Even if you submitted your weekly claims to me, I was unable to, to input it for you. What I needed to do was pack everything and send it to Saipan. Um, Saipan is the one that does the processing of all the, uh, PUA claims or applications of your new pay. Hence, probably the delay.
So on Saipan, we're still hearing a lot of delays with even PUA land, right? And, uh, I'm sure we all receive feedback from our community when we go out into the community. How is it like on Rota?
I believe it's worse because everybody knows each other. They even knew where my house is. They would come and visit me at home, so... Yeah, and you know, uh, being the only coordinator at the time, I didn't have enough hours during the day to actually help everybody. So I allowed it. If they came to the house and they had questions about the applications, I assisted them, but they of course have to be the ones to write it in and submit it.
In your opinion, is that structure working, uh, with the two individuals working for the PUA program here on Rota, but not in sync with the Department of Labor, the Rota Division? Is that working or should there be a link?
Okay, um, I actually had an advantage when I started the program here in Rota. Um, I was under, I was housed under the Department of Labor. So, um, in terms of sending off the cargo, the claims, uh, Department of Labor team were the ones transporting the cargo to Rota. Um, and whatever assistance I needed, they were there by the way. Uh, this will be my first day really in the local government. And, um, I didn't really know how to go about, uh, reaching the PUA central, which is Saipan PUA. I was very, very lucky. I had the resident director, African, to assist, connecting Saipan with me here in Rota. So basically, that's the experience I have.
In your opinion, um, and your experience, how can the relationship or the communication improve between CMI Department of Labor and the Department of Labor here on Rota? Do you have monthly meetings? Are there monthly or weekly calls? Training?
Well, that is something that we have to bridge. The, the, I mean, I'm not, I can't speak on behalf of other departments, but with my department, I do see, um, a divide. It might not be on purpose and maybe, I do not know, I'm new. But being, uh, that's one of the advantages of being new is you're able to quickly identify things that need to be fixed. And that is one thing, to bridge that divide or the, or the gap that we have, um, voting. So because there's Saipan Central, maybe they receive more information. Uh, how much information trickles to both, uh, Rota and CNI, I cannot know. But I do not have a weekly meeting with, uh, management teams, the Department of Labor, Saipan, or CNI. Uh, I had more interaction with them when I was supporting. Not to say that anything bad right now is going on, but I do know that PUA takes a lot of, uh, the Department of Labor's time in our department.
I see. Thank you, and thank you for sharing these and identifying, you know, some of the concerns of the department. Uh, labor is a huge topic on the Hill, especially given the millions of dollars to come, the construction that's expected, both personal, right? Home improvements, home construction, and in the private, the business sector. So, um, labor and education, the pipeline, right, to labor. How can we attract our students to come home and work? How can we offer better jobs? How can we train our people and build our capacity? Those are all things that are constantly being discussed on the Hill. So you sharing your input is so valuable. So thank you very much for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you?
Thank you, Rep. Bla. I recognize Rep. Sabla.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, RD. I, a couple of quick follow-up questions on the PUA issue. So do the PUA coordinators have access to the portal now? Are they able to make changes here on, on Rota?
Unfortunately, no, ma'am, but, um, when I was your coordinator, that was back in January, I was finally given access. Um, so I only had that access for about two to three weeks before I became a resident director. And after that, I do inquire with the coordinators here in Rota, but they do, they still do not have access.
So they're doing the same role that you had before, packaging everything, submitting to Saipan?
Yeah, that's right.
And are they also implementing the lost wages assistance program?
I guess, as far as I know, uh, and this was when I spoke to the secretary, she did inform me that all payments, active payments, uh, during this time, same August first to August fifteenth of last year, if all payments that are active during that time are receiving a hundred dollars or more from PUA benefits, then you are automatically going to receive the lost wages assistance.
Okay, um, thank you for addressing that. And, um, finally, uh, as you may be aware, CMI Department of Labor received a technical assistance grant to begin developing an unemployment insurance program. Has the Rota Department of Labor been engaged in any of that planning or brainstorming even?
No, but I do recall connectivity data for that particular grant. Um, I believe it's based, um, based on, uh, businesses that have either lost employees or whose employees are working on reduced salaries. I hope that is the correct, the sharing grant that we're talking about.
Yeah, I would, I would think so, which is recently changed. But as far as implementation or, you know, developing what that program would look like, uh, your department has not yet been engaged?
Not at all.
Thank you. I yield to the chair.
Thank you. And now, female floor leader, Ema.
Thank you, Chair. Um, just a couple of, just to clarify, it's not regarding the budget, but, um, as far as CWs concerned, with CMI and Rota, do you have a number on the registered contract workers or here in the world?
No, sir, we posed that question to the, uh, let me take that back. The former RD did ask that question to the secretary of Labor, and, uh, she has not received any information from USDAS. I believe they are the only ones that have that data at this time?
Uh, yeah, uh, that's true, but also companies that I know of in the CMI has to turn in report, uh, I forgot what, um, number was it, I nine or something, they have to always report the number of locals versus the number of CWs. Uh, and then that should, I believe that should be also, uh, extend out here to the island of Rota.
I apologize, sir, uh, I was, I was talking about the, um, um, registered and active foreign workers. I was just thinking you were asking me about workers with expired expenses. I apologize. Uh, yes, we do receive that in terms of, uh, the quality components report, which I do not have right now, but if I can give you that information, um...
Yeah, no, maybe that's something that you might, maybe give to the woman of, uh, education and labor, uh, person. Um, and the reason why I'm asking this is because if, if you are asking help with regards to CWP's, at least you have to know how many CWs are based here. Uh, and that way, uh, you may not be able to get it directly, but at least NMC, uh, is here. Uh, they are allowed to receive CWP's and that can extend and help the island of Rota in regards of accessing, uh, CWPs. Uh, but unless, uh, until then, if you don't know those numbers, then you can't access those, uh, at least a percentage of that fees. And we're trying to get a few of how many, uh, you know, basically, registered workers are here, no? Uh, and you don't have to go to the extent of, are they legally here or that's totally out of our jurisdiction, but, uh, at least to get the number of CWs so we can, uh, help you get funds. And then you can address enforcement and other with regards to CW, or even training.
I apologize, sir. I do know that it's not a hundred plus. Uh, as for the exact number, I really do need to get back to you guys later. I'm sorry on my part.
Um, with regards to, uh, labor cases, is there a few here or?
No, no complaints, that's okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The floor is open. I'll hand it over to Rep. Zonk.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We can do, uh, sure, uh, for leader, um, Ema, um, question. Who does the registration for CW? Is it doing it in Saipan or is it here?
Uh, I believe it is in Saipan.
So it does, who is the partner is why you don't know the numbers as far as, who registered and who gave the idea? So how much is the like to be?
Yes, that is correct.
That is, thank you. That's all I...
No.
All right, any other member? All right, um, thank you, RD Cabrera. Uh, if there are none from the members, this concludes our budget here. Um, and so if there's anything that we've missed or that you want to bring to the committee, please feel free to reach out to my office. Um, and so with that, I will, do you have anything you want to say?
I actually have, uh, a handout regarding PUA contacts. If, you know, there's been, that you guys need to contact PUA for anything. I just extracted this from the portal, the Marianas Labor Network, so...
Are these like private numbers or?
No, I can't. I signed a confidential form, so... Yeah. Okay, thank you. Thank you, so...
Thank you very much, RD. Um, members, this concludes the first day of the budget here. Um, and so before we move on to the next item, I'd say we have tomorrow, the remaining five agencies. Same time, I will start at ten. Uh, and so with that, I, five agencies, Labor, Commerce, uh, Council, Mayor's Office, and Finance. Um, so with that, I open the floor. All right, if there's none, moving on to announcements. Uh, members, we have the Health and Welfare Public Area happening in just about fifteen minutes. Uh, it's in relation to the, it's regards to the medical referral program. Um, and then we have the town hall this evening at six o'clock, same, um, here at the Mayor's Conference Hall. And then tomorrow, we have our first, uh, agency for the public, uh, for the budget hearing at ten AM as well. And then the Natural Resource Committee at four o'clock tomorrow here at the Mayor's Office. Um, that's all I have for announcements. Anyone else? All right, uh, thank you. Now, can I get a motion for adjournment? Uh, motion made by Rep. Sabla, seconded by Rep. Probst. All in favor, say aye. And opposed, say nay. Motion carries this, what do you say, uh, meeting is adjourned.